I guess I'll go ahead and open the meeting. This is the meeting of the Village of Beach Park Village Board. It's our regular meeting, August 27th of 2020 at 7:00 PM. Let's call it 7:02. We have, first order of business is the roll call. Would our clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Gus. Trustee Jensen.
Right here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Sidik.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Attorney Farolo.
Here.
Mayor Hucker.
Here.
And Trustee Foulton is present.
All right. Then let us stand and recite the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is mine, funded with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item of business tonight is the approval of minutes for the Village Board Regular Meeting of August 13th of 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. You ladies go ahead.
I got a motion from Trustee Miller. Was that a second by Trustee Jensen?
I would be happy to second that motion.
All right. Any discussion?
There was a song like that, wasn't there?
Any discussion on the minutes? All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have approval of the warrant list. The bill's presented for payment in the amount of $106,068.60. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Oh, excuse me, the. Sorry.
Yeah, so moved.
Motion by Trustee Sidik.
Second, Miller.
Second by Trustee Miller. Thank you. Any discussion on the bills? All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no items of special business tonight. We have now the first opportunity for any public member that would wish to speak on any of the agenda items. Later in the agenda, we do have a second opportunity to speak. So anyone that would wish to address the board on any agenda items, please unmute yourself, state your name and your case. All right. Hearing none. We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting for any and all comments. Next up is the mayor's report. As we all know, we've had no shortage of news about our neighbors to the north and some unrest that has been taking place up there. We, I'm sure, have all paid closer attention to this than most other areas as it is so close to us. We understand now that one of the parties involved was actually from Antioch, not too far away. And we're just getting details now and some of the backstories and some of the people so that were involved in the shootings and some of the deaths. Happily, last night was a much different night up in Kenosha. The protests were more along the lines of what you'd call a peaceful protest. There was a lot of marching, chanting, and, you know, the normal discourse of the civil type protests that I think everybody really wants to have. We were hearing reports that there could be unrest in other areas. None of that materialized. None of it ever was to be really close to us, other than some potential that was south of us. Excuse me. But, as I say happily, seems to have contained itself around the downtown areas of Kenosha at this point. I'm sure we all have friends and family up there, and I'm sure that it's in everybody's hearts right now to be sure that their family and friends are safe. It sounds like they have enough presence of police up there now to handle most anything that could happen, but I don't know. Nobody expected what did take place. So just our prayers to continue down the path reconciliation for that town. I cannot imagine being in an elected position in a community where that kind of unrest is going on. And just my heart goes out to everybody there. So I think that is all I have to report tonight. I will move on to trustee reports. We have Richard Gus. Does anyone have a report on behalf of Trustee Gus? All right. We'll move on to Trustee Jensen then. Any report?
I have very little report, apart from the fact that I'm going fishing tomorrow. The next finance meeting will be on the 16th at 6:00 PM, and it will be virtual as far as I know.
Great. What are you fishing for?
Muscle lunge. I've got to beat that one that you were bragging about so much a year or so ago.
How about this one here? This was just this last week. Is it okay?
I see your face. I don't see.
Oh, it's.
I'm looking at you across the room.
Well, I'd have to hold it up like this. I'm also on the individual one. Sorry. I just felt I should brag.
Well, darn it. I don't see that. We'll have to do.
I'll taunt you with it later.
You'll have to text it to taunt me.
All right. Well, all the best for your travels and for your fishing there. Excuse me. Trustee Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a reminder in general for the public, anybody who's out there listening, that the census deadline has been pushed back several times, and the latest hard deadline is September 30th. So we've gotten a really good response from most of the people in our community. I'm really happy to report that. People can respond to the census by phone, by mail, or online. Online is the first time in 2020. But just, you know, the really point to emphasize is that if you do not participate in the census, Beach Park stands to lose out on a lot of much-needed dollars for a lot of different projects and entities going forward. So every person who misses equates to dollars lost for us. So the more participation and the more complete we can get account of our population, the better it is for everyone, really. So that's all I have.
Regina, we are in Illinois. Can we go twice?
That's voting, Don.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Trustee Anderson is here with us tonight. Any?
I don't really have a report, but I feel like I need to mention a little congratulations to Andrew about entering the second grade. Is that what I'm seeing in the background behind him? It's usually musical equipment, and this week it's second grade. So congratulations.
Thank you. It's a big step for me.
I didn't notice that. I don't know what to say. I'll just move on to Trustee Sidik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to second your comments because, of course, this is all a huge concern and a weight on our shoulders. So again, I'd just like to second your comments, and I appreciate what was brought forward. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. All right. Trustee Wells, any report tonight?
No report, Your Honor. But just like to say that our prayers go out to all those folks in the Wisconsin area that may have been affected in any way, any way, or more fashion, by incidents of late. Continue to pray for them.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Got a frog in my throat tonight, and he's not happy. Village Administrators Report, anything for us?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Couple of notes. FEMA has issued the firm maps, and I know I've been working with Trustee Anderson on his personal property. But there'll be upcoming meetings, public meetings, on the firm maps. There's not a lot of change in the village, but it's a different methodology that they're using and a whole different look. However, I just want everybody to know we're going to be publishing all that information upcoming on the website in the next couple of days or so. So that information will be out there for you to take a look at, as well as let anybody know who might be interested, you know, and as well as the public, they'll have that opportunity to look at it. And I don't, you probably all received it, but I wanted to also let you know that there's that survey that Lake County Department of Transportation has sent out. And I think that's very important for the future transportation in Lake County, that everybody participate in that survey. And of course, we're going to be putting that out on the website and social media also so the public has an opportunity to weigh in on traffic planning for the future in Lake County. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item nine, the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. First is the finance report from July of 2020. Second is the public safety report from July of 2020. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will give you that motion, Mayor.
Second, Miller.
Motion by Trustee Jensen. And actually, Trustee Anderson beat you, Trustee Miller, so he'll get the second on that one.
Well, there's a delay when you're remote, you know.
That's right. He does have the advantage here because I can, he's right in my ear. I can.
It won't happen again, Regina. I'm sorry.
Any discussion on the content of either of those items?
Well, just a brief note on the finance report, as was discussed at the last finance meeting, the thing, the COVID impact on our budget hasn't been quite as, it's there. It's substantial, but not as bad as we had feared. So fingers crossed, we might do better than we thought we would.
I saw a report today, actually, a news article today that included comments from the Illinois Municipal League. Eighty-seven percent of the municipalities in the state of Illinois have had an impact on their, negative impact on their budget from the COVID-19 pandemic. So that is virtually everyone. That's statistically, they probably had 13% that didn't respond. So that's virtually everybody. So I guess we count ourselves once again in the fortunate place of having a long legacy of living within our means and not spending money that we shouldn't be spending, so.
And we have Peggy.
Special thanks to Peggy and Mark and everybody else in the department heads for working so hard to keep our budgets within line and cutting. I know it's got to be tiresome to always have to think about cutting back and watching costs, but, you know, this helps us be in the position we're in right now.
Yep.
And it's a great place to be.
Yep. Well, having seen, you know, the Keeping Up With The Joneses, if you could think of that analogy, and I've seen the number of people in the last years, but also in the most more recent months, that have had to cut back on lifestyle, have had financial decisions that they made that were unsustainable businesses that have had to close, and all of those things. And despite the frustration and the pain of continually towing our budget line and not making expenses that were expenditures that otherwise might really be nice to make, that keeps us healthy and keeps us in a good place. So I, along with you, I'm very grateful that we've got staff that will follow that priority and keep us all in line, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. Well, then we have a motion on the floor. Would the clerk please call the roll with regards to the consent agenda?
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Moving on to item 10, ordinances and resolutions. First up, we have a resolution that Trustee Miller will bring forth.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. You have before you a resolution tonight that was recommended for approval by the Finance Committee at our last meeting on August 19th. And this, a little backstory on this is the Illinois Department of Health and Human Services is going to provide $5,000 in additional funding to Beach Park to continue our Census 2020 outreach. A lot of communities, probably all communities to some degree, have a hard-to-count element of the population. And, you know, it's, just makes it more challenging to get the news out and get the responses in and just provide the information that is badly needed. So this grant will help support our efforts with getting a complete count of our population. And specifically, the village's intent is to use the funds by partnering with Univision to get participation from the Latinos in the Beach Park area. And actually, in your packet on page 23, there's an attachment B that says the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus is going to contract with Univision on our behalf for the marketing research to target our Latino-Spanish-speaking residents. So this is, this is a really easy thing for us, but it's a very important thing, I think, that we're going to get some help with doing. And I'm just grateful that the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus has helped us with this, acquiring this grant. So with that, I would like to make the motion to approve a resolution accepting the Census 2020 Participation Grant and authorizing the reimbursable expenditure of a not-to-exceed amount of $5,000.
We have a motion by Trustee Miller?
Second by Sidik.
Trustee, second by Trustee Sidik. All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
And what resolution number is that?
Twenty-nine.
It is Resolution 29. Thank you.
Mayor, may I add just one more thing?
Sure.
Just a thank you to Adrian because Adrian was kind of a baptism by fire into the census stuff when Lisa departed. So in addition to everything else he's doing, he took this on, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for taking such good care of it.
Well, he's blushing, so I think he.
Doesn't have to blush. So appreciated. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Moving on, then we have another resolution to be presented by Trustee Jensen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a motion to approve a resolution authorizing settlement agreement between the Village, Beach Park, and North Shore Gas. And the backstory on this is, this is the outcome of the audit that we have contracted with ASVAR to perform to make sure that the utility taxes are all being collected properly. And they discovered that North Shore Gas was indeed not taxing the gross revenues as they were supposed to. And after some negotiation, a settlement was reached, and we'll receive a one-time payment to account for their error over time, $11,630.50. That has, was negotiated, and a fraction of that, I don't recall what it was. Oh, the gross was 19, 384.17, and the balance goes to ASVAR as a finder's fee under our agreement with them.
As a wise friend of mine once told me, every $11,630.50 helps. So that was a motion by Trustee Jensen. Do we have a second?
Second, Miller.
We have a second by Trustee Miller. It's taken a little while, but it seems like we finally got to the end. I'd like to extend our gratitude to Peggy for her work on this, as well as past members of the staff and current. This has been no small feat over the years to get this straightened out, and I guess that's what happens when you incorporate a village into the middle of an unincorporated area, just there's going to be mistakes. So, all right. If there's no other discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Motion passes. That would be Resolution 30. We have no items of unfinished business to tend to. Under new business, I see Trustee Anderson has one for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This new business would be public relate, excuse me, public works related. It's pay application number one for the motor fuel tax, street maintenance project. We've gone over, Village Staff and the engineers has gone over the pay application and have recommended approval of the dollar amount. Of course, there's 10% being withheld from this for the end as their incentive to get things done and wrapped up. This first pay request covers, where did I read that? Tree removal, pulverization of existing roads, some storm sewer improvements, utility adjustments, and binder asphalt on pulverized streets. The pay request is in the amount of $127,353.69, and I would move for approval of pay application number one.
We have a motion by Trustee Anderson?
Second, Miller.
Second by Trustee Miller. All right. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries.
I probably should have mentioned that that pay application was from Schroder Asphalt.
That's my.
I don't think I mentioned that earlier, so let's add that. Nobody's offended. I'll add that to the motion that we just approved.
Good clarification. Otherwise, Peggy wouldn't know where to write the check.
That's right. Just a blank check to whoever stops by.
Oh, boy. Okay. On to item 13, which is citizens addressing the board on any topic. We've had a request by resident Bob Johnson to address the board. Mr. Johnson, are you on the call?
There's one number that's muted, I see.
There is one caller. I have a phone number ending in 5337 that is muted. Can we unmute that caller? Okay.
Does anybody have his number? Like, call him and see if he's.
Oh, he's, that's unmuted.
Wait.
You read me now?
We can.
Okay.
Welcome.
Welcome. Well, thank you. I'm not going to beat on your, all of your ears anymore about this issue, and I'm glad that I was told to enter it into a petition by one of the staff. And that's great. So go ahead and take a look at what you think. They just called me again today from your insurance company that had denied it, but now Alexis has called me and wanted more information, so I guess she's working on it again and whatever. Thank you.
All right. Well, for the benefit of the board, you've all received supplementary information about Mr. Johnson's situation. We have a tree that apparently was on village property that has, part of it has come down and damaged his fence and a neighbor's fence. We addressed the damage by the fallen tree by removing it, but we have not paid any expenses for the tree removal. The individuals have submitted claims to their insurance companies. Mr. Johnson has made a formal request for us to, for the, to compensate him for the building permit and for his deductible, which I believe was $500 plus the amount of the permit. In checking with our insurance, our insurance is indicating that this is not a covered claim, and we have our corporation counsel, Mr. Farolo, on the call as well. So if we might get a little bit of an education about liability and falling trees and that, Jim, if you've got a few minutes?
Sure, definitely. The law in this area provides that we would be liable if there's some evidence that we were negligent, or any property owner for that matter, Village of Beach Park in this case, some evidence that we were negligent in the maintenance of the tree, or some evidence that we had noticed, either actual or constructive notice, that the tree was in a dangerous condition and falling was foreseeable. So those are the parameters that the law provides. If neither of those exists, evidence of negligence or evidence of notice to the property owner that the tree at issue was in a dangerous condition, then the, and it falls due to a storm, I think a windstorm in this case, natural condition, the property owner from which the tree fell will not be held liable. And the cleanup of the tree and damage will fall on the owner who received the fallen tree or the damage. So it sounds to me like your TPA has looked at this and continues to do so, and they're looking at these area issues. I guarantee it, whether or not there's evidence that the village was negligent in this case. It's a simple negligence analysis. So that's, that's the outline of what's happening with this claim, and I'm sure they're looking at all Mr. Johnson's photographs and evidence.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. I know at the staff level that we went back and reviewed property files, reviewed complaint logs, checked with personnel, and have not found any evidence that we have logged or recorded any meetings or visits or anything. Mr. Johnson did reflect that a neighbor had called, or at least anecdotally said that a neighbor had called and someone came out. We weren't unable to ascertain who that someone was and what the findings were at the time. So we're kind of flying blind here for any history on this. We don't, we don't have any record of it. And of course, this gets back to the question of liability, and that's why we have insurance. We're, at least to this point, staff has no authority to pay a claim like that. I have no authority to pay a claim like that, and, you know, we do, we do have insurance for a reason. So I guess, you know, we have no, no decision to make tonight. I wanted to make sure that Mr. Johnson had his opportunity to address the board with this matter. He certainly has in writing, and you all have that. And if there's any particular concerns, questions, comments that the board members might have, you know, at this point in time, if the insurance company's still looking at it, I think that's obviously the correct path, is to let them conclude if, you know, they called and asked for more information. But short of that, you know, there is no authority inherent in the administration of the village to just write a check for any amount of money to a resident for a claim like this. It would take board action to authorize that. And then, of course, we have to look at the larger picture of, you know, how many trees does the village have and what level of responsibility can, can we accept? You know, if, if trees come down, we can't, certainly can't inspect every tree in the village. We can't respond to, you know, every, every potential. But, you know, certainly if we see dangerous trees, we take them down. We do act on them when they're on our property or in our right of ways. So I guess I just, not to go into a prolonged discussion, but if any of the board members have concerns that they want to have addressed or comments or questions, you know, I'm certainly willing to entertain that at this time. or comments or questions, you know, I'm certainly willing to entertain that at this time.
I, I just have, forgive me if, for my ignorance, but the reference to the RMA denial.
That's the insurance.
That's the, the insurance company, RMA?
Yeah, IML, RMA.
Oh.
And this is the Risk Management Association.
All right. Thank you. I didn't under, I didn't understand that without the first part.
Yeah. Yeah. We're all used to the acronym. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. All right. Any other discussion on this topic at the moment? All right. Well, to be continued. We'll wait for any additional outcome that Mr. Johnson may hear from the insurance and/or that we may hear from the insurance. And we'll monitor that coming up to the next board meeting and see if there's a status update and/or if there's anything that we need to take board action on at that time. Moving on, we have no cause tonight for an executive session, so we are dialing to item number 16.
Eric? It'd be my pleasure to offer a motion to adjourn.
I would, I would hope for no less, trustee Jensen. We have a motion by trustee Jensen to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by trustee Addison. Any discussion on this motion? Clerk, please call the role.
I would like a post hoc discussion. I now can see your face. You can show me your, your monster face.
Wait, wait, wait. I, I can't leave him hanging. I mean, I, I can certainly taunt him by text.
The fish was hanging.
I am, I am relatively proud of the small beast, as it were. Let's see, can you, there, how's that? So it's only about, only about 36 inches. So if you, if you can taunt me with a larger one, I'd be happy to accept the taunt.
Well, what you do, you, you know, the secret is you hold it as far out as you can.
I, and, and I did. I mean, it was, it was way out there, but.
Arm extension. So it's six inches from the camera.
Yep.
Yep.
Perspective.
I've got one like that. I've got one like that. I'll show you. It's about a six inch northern. It looks huge.
Yep, yep. It was a muskie actually, but I'm just saying.
No, no, one, one I've got. But my thumb looks like it's about four feet long.
This stuff, I've forgotten.
Maybe we should vote to adjourn.
Oh, 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 oh. We were, we were here for something other than fish stories. Okay.
Trustee Jensen?
Aye.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Addison?
Aye.
Trustee Sidik? Trustee Sidik?
She's gone.
Trustee Wells?
Aye.
Okay.
Did I?
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, see you all in September.
I'm here. I'm aye.
Okay, all right.
Didn't go through.
I do believe I heard unanimous consent to adjourn, so I'd like to thank you all for your time and again, look forward to the day when we can all be in the same room again. Thank you so much.
Yeah, likewise. Thank you.